Okay, folks. It is 7:02, and I will call to order the February 28th meeting of the Westford School Committee. Welcome, everybody, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I think we have a modification from what's in the on the agenda, right?
Correct. We are going to remove the executive session minutes dated February 14th, 2022. Motion to approve.
Oh, and the regular.
Thank you. And the regular session minutes from February 14th, 2022. So no meeting minutes are approved and are part of this consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda with those changes as outlined in tonight's meeting agenda.
Second.
Any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, a call for the vote. All in favor? That passes unanimously, six zero. Thank you. That brings us to public comment. I'm making sure we're live on Zoom. We are. Great. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts with the committee. We do this every meeting. And just, it's worth reviewing. I was thinking it's been about six months, a little more than six months since we first started meeting as a committee in August. And so it's good to come back to what we voted in then as a committee, as our operating protocols for the year. And one of those was how we do public comment, because I know there have been questions. And so it's just a reminder that we do offer at every meeting. We do want to hear from folks. There's a number of ways people can get in touch with us. One of those is coming here to public comment. Another is by emailing us anytime our emails are on the district website. A third is for those who can't be here for the scheduled public comment that we have every meeting would be the Zoom opportunity, which is nice that we can still offer that. So we certainly welcome people who need to be at home to join us on Zoom to make public comment. And then lastly, something that's worth just talking about, and I think we've talked about it before. We try as a committee to make sure that if we have a vote that we can predict ahead of time, we try to span our discussions around votes over to a two-meeting period so that there's always a public comment period between, you know, between the initial discussion. Sometimes we span many, many weeks, you know, some topics are ongoing, say budget. But we do try to do that, too, so that the public comment period does span the initiation of a discussion and the actual vote. And so, and just a reminder that we limit public comment to two minutes a person. And with that, you have the mic, Christine.
Thank you. My name is Christine Dusom. I teach fourth grade at the day school, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Westford Education Association. I first want to acknowledge the hours and tremendous work by Dr. Chu and Dr. Clary. They were not given an easy task at all to present a budget that is balanced. So I first want to acknowledge all the time and the countless hours, I'm sure, that went into weighing all the options. I, on behalf of the WEA, we're going to, we would like each school committee member to vote no on the proposed budget. And the reason, the two main reasons for that is if given a little more time, we know that some funds become available. And it is the WEA's hope that if we could eliminate cutting direct services, specifically the four reading interventionists, we as teachers would like to maintain the same number of students receiving reading services. Especially with COVID, there's obviously going to be a learning gap with the little ones as they're developing their foundational reading skills. And as a staff, we're concerned about the middle school class size of 25. Typically, Westford does a really good job. It's done a very good job at maintaining small class sizes. Before the pandemic, there was social and emotional concerns, and obviously, the pandemic has just heightened those numbers. So we are requesting a no vote on tonight's proposed budget. Thank you.
Thanks. We have a Zoom commenter. We have a couple. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, yeah. And just to remember for folks to give your name and your address when you start your comment. Thanks. Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead, Edith.
Sure. Edith Joakim, Life, Rayfieldstone Drive. I had sent an email, I believe sometime last week, to the school committee and received no response. But I can reiterate the contents of it here briefly. It's very clear, and I know we will be going into more depth about this later, that Westford needs to be much more attentive to DEI. And I know that there have been repeated attempts in the past, even with school committee members, to push forward the idea of a DEI director. I want to be clear that I did look at the meeting packet and see a draft that included a position that contains equity, but more specifically is towards curriculum work. So I'm wondering if there will be a concerted push to have somebody who is directly responsible for policymaking at the administrative level of the schools regarding DEI in the future and the near future, if you're clear.
Okay. I don't know if that's something we'll directly discuss. We can try to touch on that in the update, on the business item, on the update to the response to the incident, I think. Otherwise, I don't think we'll have probably a full discussion on that. Because as you can see in the current budget, there is not, there is not the capacity for DI director. But I know it's something that has come up multiple times, so I expect it will be an ongoing wish for some and something that is certainly on this committee's mind. I know it has been in the past and will continue to do so. So I really appreciate you reaching out on that and do know that it is on our minds and it is something that I know a lot of people are looking at and contemplating for the district.
Great. I think I should also just make a quick note that it really isn't a wish, it's a necessity. And the systemic nature of the oversight of these kinds of issues is what is producing these repeated incidents over the last many years. So I would hope that the school committee will very quickly try to find the resources in order to be more reflective of our community values and needs. Thanks.
Thank you, Edith. We have another Zoom comment. Hi, David.
Hey, good evening, all. How are you doing this evening? David Walsh, 48 Devo Street here in Westford. I just wanted to bring up a quick item that hopefully can be discussed at some point in today's agenda, either by the school committee or by the superintendent. So as we move into a new phase, we believe it's important to bring up other restrictions that are continuing to impact the school experience for Westford students. Things like bringing school members together for community meeting, differences from school to school in regard to Plexiglas use, assigned seating, which is, you know, obviously was there for contact tracing, but that's not involved anymore, teacher-specific rules, and how we're addressing some of these other finer restrictions that are being put on the students and the differences from teacher to teacher, school to school. Would love for Dr. Chu to address that formally and how we're going to handle that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment from the public, either in person or on Zoom? Okay, well, seeing none, we will forge ahead to our next agenda item. And thanks for those who did comment. Let's move on to informational updates, and we'll start with the superintendent update.
Sure, thank you. First thing I'd like to do is congratulate Anushka Patel, who we were told was named Massachusetts Journalist of the Year, of which I think we're not surprised. We're very excited for her, and that is a huge, huge accomplishment. Along with, Srinithi Raj was also named a finalist in the competition. So the fact that the two of them were finalists and then Anushka was given that honor, I think, is, or she won that honor. I mean, I feel like it was a fantastic accomplishment. She now will move on to the national competition and represent Massachusetts. So we want to congratulate both of them for the achievement. And I think also the advisors, Ms. Fonda and Mr. Holbrook as well, too. They've done incredible work with the ghostwriter, for which we are appreciative. Before the break, we had the principal assistance, the principal aides, the training that we had talked about through the ARPA process. We were able to organize that. And school psychologist Melissa Werner and BCBA, which is a board-certified behavior analyst, Abby Veer, who both are members of our staff. They conducted a training for the principal aides on Wednesday, the 16th, and Thursday, the 17th. The different things that they had talked about. They talked about an overview of conditions associated with different challenging behaviors, the importance of observing and recognizing the antecedent, the behavior, and the consequences, helping them to understand more things that are identifiable in children's behavior, specifically while they're monitoring them at recess and in the lunchroom. Specific ways to prevent incidents, being aware of the environmental conditions, the verbal behavior, facial expressions, physical behaviors, talking about all these different types of things, and encouraging different communication skills. And most importantly, helping them to identify ways in which to prevent escalation. So the overall feedback was positive, and so we want to thank the town for helping us with that funding and for Melissa and for Abby and for all of the principal aides who participated. And we had our first meeting for the Stony Brook Principal Search Advisory Committee today, that Dr. Clary is chairing. Do you want to share about that?
Sure. We kicked off the meeting today. The eight participants met together. We have two parents who are involved on the committee, two staff members, a curriculum coordinator. We have a school committee member, Representative Catherine Clear. Dr. Chu is participating in even this early process, which is great. So we have a variety of stakeholders. And today, we went through the resumes as well as the interview questions. So the interviews are actually going to start for the Stony Brook later this week. And then this group will deliberate and move forward finalists to the next phase. And starting next week, the finalists will be invited in to interview with Dr. Chu's central office cabinet. And the following week, we will have opportunities for staff to meet and greet and ask questions as well as parents in the evening. So information, once we figure out how many finalists there are and the dates that will be set, we will communicate that to families and to staff.
And we're going to have feedback forms, Google feedback forms, for all of the participants and the faculty when they meet and with the parents when they meet with the finalists, so that they can provide us with that feedback. And then the Miller search is going to be taking place the following week.
That'll keep, that'll keep us busy. I mean, that's a lot going on in the next few weeks with that, so that's great. Thanks to everyone participating in that. We look forward to the updates on that one. Okay, school committee updates. Oh, actually, can I, real quick, I don't think you have an update, but I don't know if we, just remind me if we've talked about, I know the tiered focus monitoring results were in, was that something that was going to get addressed? I can't remember if we talked about doing it as an agenda item or if it was more like an update.
Yeah, I think we're going to do it as an agenda.
Okay, that's what I thought we did. Okay, good. Thanks. Okay, now we, school committee updates. Gloria.
I wanted to provide an update on behalf of Alicia, who's not with us tonight. We will be having a policy subcommittee meeting on Thursday, 10:00 a.m. It is a Zoom meeting. The agenda and the Zoom link are available on the town website. We'll be continuing our discussions with the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee and other policies that we have in the pipeline.
Thank you. Other school committee updates. Valerie.
Finance Subcommittee is scheduled to meet tomorrow afternoon. And while there's a few things on our agenda, I wanted to mention that sort of rounding up any additional, I'm going to use the word, the phrase, Phase Two, because that's how the select board has sort of differentiated it for ARPA funding. Sorry to get, wait for the punchline there. So we're going to be talking about, we had sort of a pre-meeting to like think about any brainstorming ideas. I'm going to be sending that list to the seven of you, all committee members, for any final input. And then we're going to try to hammer out which ones, you know, are feasible and make sense and see where that gets us tomorrow's meeting. And as part of that, one thing that we did sort of start framing out is a summer program, similar to last year's Bridges to Success, that continued intervention services for a couple of weeks in the summer. So something like that will be in the works for this summer as well.
I don't think so. Any questions on that?
Is there a date on that, Valerie, as to when select board needs to get that or when they're going to start the Phase Two process?
I think the initial timeline was May.
Okay.
So we're just trying to, as part of like kind of a lingering budget discussions, to try to wrap up.
Anita, does that jive with like the timeline you had in your head?
I thought it was the 22nd of March, but I might be wrong.
Oh.
That's much sooner than May.
They both begin with M.
In the fall, it was mentioned.
Yeah, no, I think that would be good to, like, if it's that much sooner than we were thinking, that would be really good to know.
Sure.
For sort of like the, like submitting proposals, you're saying?
My understanding was that was the next time we were looking at ARPA again.
Yeah, okay.
Next time it's going to be on our.
Okay. So for those who can't hear, it sounds like there may be a chance that March 22nd is a date of note for that. But we're finding out what exactly that will be.
March 22nd was the last I heard.
Okay, so we'll make sure we are ready to go for whatever needs to be done on that, for that meeting. That would be a Tuesday. Okay, thanks. Okay, student representative, Magna.
So I have a couple of updates. The swim team swam at BU. They had a meet this weekend, and they did really, really well. The girls' swim team especially did extremely well. And the girls' basketball team and the boys' basketball team, I believe, both made it to states, which is really, really, like, that's crazy. So, you know, of course, we're happy for them and we'll be cheering them on. We had our public forum, I believe, right before break. That went well. I think a lot of students had a lot to say. If I had any feedback, it would be to hold more public forums. Clearly, the students had a lot to say. I saw Principal Antonelli's email, and I look forward to seeing how our school goes about the change that he's mentioning in the email, generally how we evolve as a culture at our school. I know the ADO club is supposed to present in sometime in March, so I think that will be good. So, yeah, the public forum, I think, was a success. And, you know, masks are coming off next week. So I think everybody is excited after two years, but also I think it is important to remember that we still do have folks that, you know, don't necessarily have that luxury. So that is something to keep in mind. We can celebrate but be cautious. And then the last thing is Gloria got back to me on the policies for next year's election. So that's sort of exciting because I think, I believe, we're opening up some new positions to be elected next year. So that is exciting, and we're getting the ball rolling on that. So that is all the updates I have for you.
Thanks. That's great. That's a lot of good, positive news. And we'll talk more about the forum, I think, in a little bit. But yeah, appreciate hearing from you on that. Okay, on to business. We'll start with the FY '23 budget discussion. It's been a long road. I think, I'm speaking for myself, but probably for the committee, when I say it's always challenging. It's always challenging to formulate a budget, especially when the realities tell us that the town tax revenues, which drives so much of the town budget, are limited. And I do want to reiterate that for people. It is limited in our growth each year per state legislation. So Prop 2.5 limits the amount that can be levied each year and how much it can increase. So there is a finite limit, and I think it's important to remember that, that we are working with a finite budget. And I'm just, and so that means that there are things that everybody at this table every year brings that we'd want to see. There are additions, programmatic additions that I think we all have that we would like to see. And every year, we work really hard to work within the realistic bounds of what we have. And I'm proud of the work and grateful, I'm grateful for all the voices out there, all the people who have talked to us. I think, you know, there are people who have talked to every single one of us in the past couple, you know, couple of months on their hopes and their visions and their concerns. And so that actually really helps us as a committee in setting a vision and driving where the budget goes. And I'm also grateful for all the hard work that our staff and administrators have put into this budget. I think it, you know, we'll talk more about it now, but I know a lot of work's gone into it. And so I feel good about, regardless, I feel good about where FY '23 will bring us as Westford Public Schools and how we can meet the needs of all of our students. And with that, I guess maybe we open it up. Unless there, I don't know that you have any additional comments or anything like that on the budget. I think we've sort of covered everything. You presented last week the key differences or the key changes that evolved in the past couple of months. So unless you have something else.
We don't have new information.
Yeah, I didn't. I would open it up to discussion and questions from the committee. The packet does have the full budget. There's a document that has a link to the full budget, so we've had an opportunity to look at that. As well as the questions that we had submitted over time, those are published in the packet as well.
I just feel, I feel the need to expand on some of your comments, Chris. We've been through a number of tough budget cycles. And we are working within limited means. Prop 2.5 limits the amount of funds, new funds, that the town can raise. And those funds necessarily need to be shared between town and schools. I think that everyone needs to be cognizant of the fact that with the existence of Prop 2.5, if we are not in an economic boom time, and if we are, Prop 2.5, you know, there are other sources of income that supplement that. But of course, that is not the situation we are in now. Towns that do not get caught in the squeeze that Westford is finding itself in usually have one of two things, neither of which Westford has. Usually, they either have a much broader commercial tax base than Westford has or they, as a town, pass repeated, successful overrides. Westford as a town has not made the choice to go that route. So barring one of those two options, neither of which seem applicable in Westford right now, or another new source of funding, we will have to operate within the fiscal constraints that we have, as difficult as that is. And that means difficult choices and hard choices. And I don't see a way around that. And I know this is something that people who have struggled with the budget year after year and who have studied it and compared us to other towns might be aware of. And someone who maybe comes to our meetings because they're upset about one particular budget item might not be aware of. So I just wanted to step back and talk about that big picture. And because people do repeatedly ask us, why are we in this situation? Well, that is why we are in this situation. And I do not, anyway, want to point the cannon of frustration at our town partners either. Because I think our town partners have also done a very good job of trying to operate within those numbers. They've tried to give the schools what they can. They are also dealing with public safety concerns and public health concerns and other items in the town budget, which are also priorities for residents. And they, the town also, you know, shoulders costs that help support the schools, like health insurance and benefits for our retirees and other items. So this is not town versus schools. This is not, we can just go back to the town and say, but we need more, because the town itself needs more as well. So I think we've all done a good collaborative job. And I know there are going to be specific questions about some of the specific items in the budget, and I think we should air those and we should discuss those here. But I just wanted to make those big-picture comments.
That's great. Thank you. Yeah, Sean.
So this is my third year on the committee. This is the third year that we've had a quote-unquote "difficult" budget cycle that's had, you know, substantial amount of reductions, many of which are tied to enrollment, right? And it's tough, it's really tough every year. And it's this weird, it's this weird balance, right, when we make an enrollment-based reduction that we're kind of gambling that the enrollment's not going to go up the following year. Because we make this chance that we're losing a good staff member, you know, in that one or two years, and then obviously you can't hire them back. So, I mean, there's inherently a risk to that, and that's always a little concerning to me. And at least how I've rationalized this vote in my head is that, you know, our job is the mundane. It's to keep the trains running, right, to keep the trains running on time and to keep the gears of the school district moving. And I, everyone's going to get paid, and, you know, we have a budget that we got to vote on. And, you know, and the town's waiting for us to make a decision so they can formulate the rest of their decisions. So I think that we do need to make a decision tonight. I will point out again that this is a very difficult one for me to make. As a parent, as someone who's a supporter of our educators, you know, it's tough. I think there's a question that we, as a town, will have to ask ourselves, which is, like, what do we value most? And I just say that, and I don't say that to try to point fingers at anyone, that's not my, I just want to point out the facts, which are that statistically, we spend a per-pupil amount that is significantly lower than other towns that surround us that are comparable in size and of performance. And yet, we perform at this stellar level. So like, on one, on one hand, that's awesome, right? But on another hand, it's, it makes our parents and the taxpayers say, well, like, what decision, like, what does that say about us? Like, we're spending so little to get such great performance. How much farther ahead could we be if we threw an extra couple of dollars on it? So, and that's more like a philosophical question that I think at some point the town's going to have to grapple with. And maybe that's through an override, maybe that's. And maybe that's through an override, maybe that's, um, you know, coming up with some more creative ways to get money, either through the commercial tax base or something. But I, like, I just wanna point out that it's just, it's difficult to have this conversation year after year after year. Uh, and this, this is no different than the years, uh, prior for me. Um, the reading interventionist one, so, so there's, there's two sets of decisions that are being made, at least in my eyes. There's the, uh, enrollment-based reductions, right? And then there's the, the, the other non-enrollment-based reductions, because we gotta close our gap, right? And, and this isn't a sight of the administration. They, they are tasked with giving us a balanced budget. But, you know, we're, the, the reformulation of human resources is great. The, uh, the reading interventionists, at least for me, that's a, that's a tough one. And I know I articulated this at the last meeting, so I won't drone on like a broken record. But the, um, I, I would say that I'm concerned about there being folks or students who are behind because of COVID. And I get it. I get, I get that the numbers don't say that, but I still have a concern about it. And if we can come up with extra money after we vote on this, or if there's something that comes back, I'd like to see it go towards the reading interventionists. Or at minimum towards something which is supposed to close that COVID gap, maybe geared at, uh, you know, our students who are struggling with reading. Um, so those are, those are my thoughts. Uh, you know, I'm gonna vote in favor of the budget, but it's, it's tough.
Well said. Ming Chen.
So, um, I have been through like the past couple of like, um, budget cycles. And then this is the budget cycle I feel most comfortable with. Uh, there are a lot of work, not only like put into, uh, the process, but also, uh, I'm also working with, um, Chris and then, um, Valerie on the finance subcommittee. And there was a lot of work happening there as well, looking into the budget, not only for this year, but also like strategically, how we're gonna lay the foundation for the school system in the next few years so that we are on a better footing strategically. Because, um, the easiest thing is like, you play some one-time gimmick to actually make something sort of work. But that's not really how to make things work. Because you're gonna actually face even more difficulties coming down the line. Um, this committee has made some commitment or prioritization regarding some of the programs which, uh, we value for the last few years and I wouldn't be able to actually, to actually make it happen. And I really think that this committee now actually putting words in their mouth to say, hey, we value some of the priorities and we're gonna make it happen in a very strategic way. The budget reflects that direction we're going. So I'm, I, I feel really pump, uh, confident about this budget because it's not just about the next school year, but the next number of school years. Because without the foundation, we're not gonna be able to move forward. And then the other thing I want to emphasize is that not only we're looking to bring on new programs, really actually affecting a lot of families and affecting a lot of students for their mental health, for their financial health. But also, I really applaud the administration into streamline our actual operation. Um, because this is where I really, uh, thinking out of box to look into ways to actually make our numbers work in a very, um, creative way. So, uh, so that, that also is something which I say is very important because we not only need to actually make the numbers work, but also make the num, the same money work better. And then that's very smart. And then I feel really confident about that.
Thanks.
My turn, Liz.
If you think so.
I can say nothing for a change. I know I'm normally the, the one complaining down here, being Irish. We never stop talking. It's a sport. Um, you know, I think before I, I say and think, first of all, you know, I actually want to thank Pat. Because I think you have created, for me, as a first-time school committee member going through the budget, um, trust, um, in, in the budgets and the work that's gone into this. And, and I also have to thank my, uh, budget buddy, mentor, teacher, Valerie. Um, you know, I think it came up in a meeting about, you know, just having somebody there to answer questions. And, and I think both of you have, have done great in helping me through my first, um, budget, um, which has been quite interesting. Looks a little bit different from housing budgets. I can promise you that much. Um, not as, not as fun to read. There's no holidays or, you know, hair, hairdos. Um, I think what I've learned from this process this year is that it's, it's a very unusual year in what we're doing right now. Um, we're coming out of COVID, but we're still in COVID. We don't know what we're looking at, you know, in the next couple of years. But we're also in, I, I kind of call this a transition year. You know, Dr. Chu is new superintendent. Pat is a new, um, finance director to our district. And, you know, it's been a tough number of years, not having been on school committee, but just as an outsider, in seeing what our district has gone through, um, both financially, you know, COVID-wise, um, with personnel changes and all that. So this is a really tough year, I think, you know, to, to see that this is how things are gonna go. I, I, I kinda feel that this, my, my take on this year has been that this is a year to kind of start afresh and figure stuff out and, you know, maybe steady the ship a bit so that what we can do, um, longer term. Um, one of the things that I kind of keeps coming to mind and the rest of the committee often hear me say at times is, um, I used to teach in Glasgow in Scotland. And we had a very different, um, you know, resourced community in, in Scotland. Um, and I know that we didn't have what we do have here in Westford. We didn't have art teachers and music teachers in the elementary schools. We didn't have, you know, curriculum coordinators. We didn't have all these reading interventionists and math interventionists and psychologists, you know? If you needed a kid who needed to see a psychologist, it was at least a six-month wait. So I think it's really important that I stress to the community that we have a very rich educational district in the resources that we have, um, at our fingertips. And, um, you know, I, I don't want us to lose sight of everything we do have because there's other communities even within, in Massachusetts that probably doesn't have what we have. Um, saying that, what Sean said, I, I do think, you know, this is also a part of a wider conversation as a community on a town level that we need to consider longer term as to what do we as a community value for moving forward. Um, and that's something that is only gonna happen, I think, as people get more engaged in town-wide discussions, engage with select boards, school committee, show up for town meetings. However, we can make that work this year, Valerie. I know you're, you're on that access committee meeting group. So that could, things won't change unless people start to have these harder conversations and talk about, do we do overrides? Do we increase town revenue? And that has to be a, a community discussion, one that I am very willing to have. Um, I do wanna come back to the, the reading interventionists, you know? Um, it's a topic near and dear to my heart as a teacher, as a parent with kiddos, um, in that, you know, who are on IEPs. Um, Carrie, you have given me a lot of time in terms of giving me some data and understanding. And I do think the finance committee and Pat and you two have put a lot of work into trying to make the right choices and decisions, um, which aren't always easy. Um, I know it's not something we can fund for everybody. Um, but I don't take my decision lightly tonight, one way or the other. Um, I would love to fund a million teachers and a million reading interventionists. But at the same time, we also are limited by our budget and are limited by, we, we have to be fiscally responsible. I mean, it's what we teach our kids. You've only got so much money, you, the choices you make. And if it's not something like the reading interventionists, it's something else. So, you know, that's the question we have to ask ourselves today, um, in terms of, you know, our decisions. So hopefully, you know, if something changes, because we know that even though we vote tonight, things still change, things are very flexible up for the next few months. And that maybe this might change, um, along the way. Um, and so, um, I, I think that, uh, it's not easy. And at the, at the end of the day, I think the work that's gone in, and it's really about the kids in the classroom, and making sure we make the right decisions for every one of those kids above everybody else. So, there we go.
Very well said. Thanks.
Happy to be your budget buddy.
I'll buy you a drink after all of this. You, you've earned it.
Did you wanna?
No, go ahead.
Um, I have been reflecting on, um, my journey the last two years because I can still remember what it felt like to be that attendee who was mad about this one thing. And to just feel like, what am I missing? What are, why are these people so calm? Like, what are, you know? It just, it feels like, why aren't, why aren't we like storming the gates? Like, I, I remember what that felt like still. And I feel like I have come a long way and I was reflecting on why. And I think the first year, um, as a committee member last year, um, is tough through a first budget season. And so is it just a second year? Is it, um, leading the finance subcommittee and having all of those really valuable discussions, um, and over the last couple of months? Is it new leadership? You know, and I think some of it really just comes down to trust. Um, so I'm really glad you said that. Um, I think that seeing what decisions we have, um, talked about gives me the trust in like Ming Chen sort of ta, mentioned too, that we are making, um, decisions that aren't just reactive, right? It does feel like a change to, um, be thinking, looking forward, right? I think you said it very well, Ming Chen. Um, and of course, it's not easy, right? It's hard to make these decisions and not think about the individuals that are represented by these numbers and by the FTEs. Um, but I think that these are the important steps and the types of decisions that we have to make to be able to reach other priorities. And we, at the end of the day, I think maintaining our class-size guidelines um, is really, you know, the, the end of the, um, sorry, lost my train of thought. That, that feels like the, the, the base that we can return to. So as long as we're not, I feel confident that these decisions are not, um, causing harm to our student experience and the supports that they have. And, um, that, that trust that I have from all of our conversations, I think, has gotten me there. Um, I also wanna say, and I know that this is, I, I think that the budget process can be so emotional, obviously. Um, but I just have been reflecting a bit on how, um, you kind of remember things, different things. Like, last year we actually added nine FTE, right? Like, it, and most of those were special education teachers or support or adjustment counselors. Like, we have made, you know, sustainable, uh, like, we have made good decisions. It, it's not all been, um, doom and gloom for years and years. And I feel like as a district, we are sort of at a point where our enrollment is leveling off. As a town, we are no longer bringing in a cornerstone development or a graystone development that's, you know, blowing our new growth, our new revenue, um, off the charts. So we'll be looking at a couple of years of, you know, that two percent, if we're lucky, year-over-year increase from the town appropriation. And so the choices that we make to, with, with that little wiggle room, um, I think is, like, we're looking forward to try to figure out how to use that outlook and make, fund the priorities that we have, have talked about. The full-day kindergarten and, um, maintaining class-size ratios. That's all the, just, uh, scattered thoughts I had. Apologize if I jumped all over the place, because.
No, that was great. Thank you. I'd like to add something, but I, I, I think you all said it so well. I, I really appreciate those comments, everyone. I don't have a lot additionally. Um, just a reminder, process-wise, that we do have to present our budget. We have a joint meeting with the Select Board and the FinCom on Thursday, March tenth. And so that is soon, right? That's, that's in a week and a half. So it is important, I believe, that we vote, vote today and that we vote a budget that, um, meets what the town allocation is. And so I echo, I echo the concerns, I echo the hopes, and I echo the appreciation for the really thoughtful, thoughtful process this year that's gotten to us to this point. Dr. Chu, Dr. Cleary, anything to add from your perspective?
Um, yeah. I mean, I definitely, Catherine, I'm, I'm glad that you had, had thanked, um, Pat as well too, because I do feel like, um, Pat's done the lion's share of, of making this make sense in terms of being able to communicate it so well to the, to the FinCom and, and in terms of, of understanding the FY twenty-two budget to try to then make sense out of the FY twenty-three budget as well too. And to, and to be working on something in a, in a place that, that she didn't create it. So I just, I, I'm, I'm exceptionally grateful, um, for the work that she's done in doing all that. And I do understand that it's difficult. And I understand that it's to the point of the ideas in which that it does impact individuals. It is difficult. The focus is, is looking at the impact on, on the classrooms specifically and on the students. And as we, as we talk about those things, and I know it's been difficult things for all of you to kind of think about and, and, uh, and consider. My, my hope is, is that, you know, with Ming Chen, what you're talking about, I'm glad that you, you're seeing this as a strategic approach because that is the way that we've looked at it from the very beginning, is trying to look at sustainability and looking at, um, what do we need to do so that, I understand the frustration that people feel if they feel like this has been year after year of different issues. And we are, we are trying to look at it moving forward, um, to try to not find ourselves in, in, I think, that scenario. But, you know, it's, it's been a, it, it's for the first-time process for me as well too. I think the collaboration, the communication that we've been able to have, both with the, with the subcommittee and just in the way in which we've been able to talk about this over the budget cycle, um, I think has been, uh, it has been effective. I also think to Gloria, to your point, the idea that the conversations need to take place outside of the budget cycle with our town partners as well too. And we've started that, when we, when we started having our conversations about, we're, we're looking at structural change. We're looking at ways in which we're, you know, what our operational budget looks like. Um, and we've, we've taken a real deep dive. And I feel like we have to look to see how can we partner with other, with other, um, you know, elected boards in town to, to say, okay, are there ways for us to look at the, the, the full financial picture in, in a similar manner as well too?
I would just like to add, um, I agree and appreciate the fact that we can all understand and feel the difficulty when it comes to positions because they relate to humans. And I think that is by far the biggest herder, hurdle to overcome when we're bringing you proposals like we're bringing you. like we're bringing you. But in reading intervention, I understand that concern, and that has certainly been one of the more common concerns, complaints, or emails of pushback that we have received. And we felt that as well. We had everything on the table. And when we saw reading, we wanted to turn around and run like heck. However, when we were thinking about different ways to utilize the resources that we have and to use them more efficiently, we could rest in the fact that there, this proposal could be brought forward because students would still receive the intervention that they're currently receiving in terms of duration, in terms of frequency. It is not increasing sizes to a level where it would truly impact their ability to receive the intervention needed. So I just, I want to reiterate that piece. I think we, years ago, I remember during one of these processes, people had used the term that we're living beyond our means. And we've felt that because year after year, we've kept what we've had, and then we've had to try to piecemeal some things together to move forward to the next year. Some reductions had been made, you know, along the way. But I do believe that the way the budget is presented as proposed is a way to get us on our feet, to not use any one-time funds, to try to keep a certain thing in place, at the same time, not significantly compromising any student experience. And I think finding that balance, albeit uncomfortable, is one that feels really responsible in moving forward. But I understand and appreciate the concerns that have been shared.
Any other comments or questions? Well, I do appreciate all the work that everyone has done. I appreciate all the comments. I appreciate all the feedback from the community. It's obvious that people care deeply at all levels about this district. I know that, you know, there is, there are difficult choices, and we would love to have fewer of those difficult choices. And who knows what will happen? I mean, I think we've mentioned more work on identifying other sources townwide for, you know, new growth, new revenue. But that is what I said, it's a townwide thing, and I really encourage people to, and I think Catherine hit on it, and Gloria and Sean, like, think of this as we are a town, and how do we together put the, you know, prioritize the things that, you know, we value, and speak out about the things we value, and make sure that the, you know, the priority is there. You know, I think we obviously are here because we really do value the schools, and I think, and everyone who makes them what they are. And so hopefully that, we can continue backing that in a strong way. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the FY23 budget proposal.
I think that's sufficient. Very good. Any last discussion? Seeing none, I will...
Can I ask one quick question?
Yeah, yeah.
I think Pat and I might be thinking the same thing.
We just recommended a dollar amount of...
Yep. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, because it was, that was a hunt for Pat to try to find what was actually approved at the town level.
Yes, thank you. Yep.
So I feel like if you...
I have it here. Miracle.
And if the number you're about to hear does not, I know you have it to the scent in your head, so if it doesn't match, you will tell us, right?
Okay. I have a January 31st number, so I assume that number.
Why don't we just have Pat tell? Oh, okay.
Motion to approve the FY23 budget in the amount of $63,961,692.
Ming Chen with the second again. Last discussion. All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Okay, that's six zero. It's unanimous. Thank you. And I think that number, that number was right, right?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Very good. Okay. So next up will be that joint meeting on the 10th with Select Board and FinCom. Our next agenda item is an update on the restorative process in response to the January 28th incident at the Wayland-Westford Academy basketball game.
So, if I can start?
Yeah, yeah.
So the first thing I would like to actually talk about is the communication that I sent out over the break about a staff member who had posted a racist comment on social media. That individual is on administrative leave. We're still in conversations and working, working to consider, as we are doing different restorative practices, to look and see what that might also look like for staff as well too, if that's possible. It might not be possible, but that's just, that's an additional piece of this that I think is an important part. And in the conversations that we had over last week, when we were having some planning meetings with Dr. Shannon and Pathways to Restorative Communities, one of the things we talked about was that we know when, in our initial conversations, that the incident that took place on January 28th is not an isolated incident, right? And we heard clearly from the forum, the student forum, that Magna was talking about as well too, just the idea that different, different microaggressions and aggressions and acts of bias and discrimination have existed. We recognize that Westford is not alone in this, but what I think we are committed to doing is, as a community, facing it and addressing it. And so, what we've also realized is that this conversation is still already growing faster than just about the Wayland incident as well too. So like, the idea that we'll be continuing to have those conversations. We'll talk about the webinar and what we have planned, what we have planned very soon as well too. But Dr. Shannon's been working specifically with our students, students who have, who have acknowledged responsibility, as well as the students, the other students who are part of the spectator section at the game as well too, and working with the Wayland community. Principal Antonelli, I know, is even having another conversation with the principal from Wayland tonight as well too, as we're still planning to look to see when and if Wayland students want to engage in conversations as well too. So that's another aspect that is still planning. And the superintendent from Wayland, our two high school principals and the two athletic directors are planning to meet to talk about spring athletic competitions as well too, to talk about in terms of ways in which there's, there has been a concern in the way in which the MIAA was responding as well too. And I know that the superintendent from Wayland had expressed that to me specifically. And so, one of the things we had talked about is that the MIAA doesn't have a specific procedure in place to address issues or concerns that might be between communities or between teams or between specific athletes. And so, we're talking about trying to create a model as to what that process could look like for others as well too, because we know that while this is something that took place between Wayland and between Westford, again, it's more than Wayland and Westford, right? And so that's been a piece, and that's one of the reasons why I know Middlesex County District Attorney Marion Ryan was also very interested in helping to facilitate conversations with us, because she also sees this as a much larger issue beyond our communities as well too. So these are many of the different pieces that have gone into those conversations. On last, was it Tuesday? Trying to remember which day.
I think so.
I think it was Tuesday. We specifically had a planning meeting for the first community forum that we'd like to have. And I said I was going to lean to something else, but then I just remembered I wanted to talk a little bit more about what Magna had said. The information that we got from the student forum was incredibly powerful, right? It was also, it was interesting because I think Magna was there. We didn't necessarily know going into it that there weren't going to be questions, right?
Yeah.
And so, I know that that was frustrating for many of the students, and so we want to figure out ways to still have additional forums, but then to provide opportunities for questions as well too. And we have had a number of students reach out to us already. I know I've been engaging with different students via email. Mr. Antonelli and I are meeting with students who reached out to us to ask if we'd meet with them tomorrow afternoon as well too. We're going to be having some additional conversations. So we are going to have more forums that are both listening sessions and then also opportunities for questions, because I felt like, at first, I was, I just didn't know because we hadn't organized it. The DEI team had organized it, and I thought they did a great job with it. But I was also surprised when students were told that, no, we weren't going to answer questions, we were just going to listen. But I will say that me not talking, right, because everybody knows that I can be quite verbose and go on and on, for me to not say anything for 50 minutes and only listen to what students had to say, often to me and/or about what's going on, was super important. And it was really, really important for that to be able to happen. And so, we'll communicate that with students, that more of that will be happening. But then, now we talk about the community piece.
Yep. And I'll just say, just to kind of preface it, I think the things I've been hearing the most, and we heard just in conversations or from emails or going to the town DEI, the school and education subcommittee, going to the student forum, some of the themes I'm hearing is, you're talking about a restorative process, what does that mean? We don't understand what that is. We need more information. That's one. Two is, we're really upset as a community, this, you know, this is hurting a lot of people. We're hurting. We want a chance to talk about that. And then three, I think from the student forum in particular, is talking about just those cultural changes.
Yeah.
I think that's really important. And so, to answer the first, the first concern, which is what's a restorative process? So we are, this Thursday at 7:00 PM, there's going to be a webinar. And it's really just going to be an opportunity to learn a little bit about what a restorative approach looks like, maybe specifically applied to this, but a lot of it will be general. It'll be a mix, I think. So it's open to anyone in the public. I know there are a lot of people with questions. We're going to try to get the word out as much as we can. We'll get it out through school means, through town means, but we also appreciate the help getting that word out. In fact, I have a link for the, for that webinar that I think I'm just going to put in the Zoom chat, and I think Nick might be able to put it in the YouTube chat. Do I have a Zoom chat? I may not have a Zoom chat now that I look at it. I apologize for that if that's the case. It might be disabled. But the very least, it will be on the YouTube chat. It'll be out. We'll post it to Facebook. We'll post it everywhere. But this will be Thursday at 7:00. We will have Dr. Michelle Shannon-Mingo, who's been a consultant on this. We will have Pathways to Restorative Communities, who are experts in restorative practices with schools. They're going to be walking us through a little bit about the nuts and bolts of what this looks like. And so...
And then talking about upcoming opportunities for people to be in conversation.
Right. And so that's the second piece, is people want to, people want to be able to express how they're feeling about this. And so, we want to have follow-up. So I think what we tentatively said was, this would be Thursday, maybe subsequent Thursdays, we would schedule follow-up, community forums, community circles. Again, that'll be kind of the restorative lingo, but you do it in a circle format where everyone has a chance to share. And so, look out for that, I would imagine, starting March 10th, which would be, well...
Well, the problem with that is that that's our next...
Yeah. So we'll see. Yeah, we'll see. We'll see if what the next one...
When we talked about it, I did not have the March 10th meeting on this calendar.
So it's a little TBD when that first one would be, but we'll, we want to offer multiple. I think we might offer a mix of virtual and in-person, depending on how things are looking, and just give people different ways to have that opportunity to come together and share. And then, to the students, I think we've also talked, doing more like that with the students as well. And I think it's really important, and I don't know if you have the same sense, that was a very self-selected group that came to that forum, right?
Yeah.
You know, those are the people who, who had a lot, you know, of feelings to share, but maybe we also need to make sure we're covering all the students who need to hear some of those thoughts too. And that's part of building that community and changing the culture, is everyone needs to be a part of those difficult conversations. Everyone needs to hear people's experiences, because we don't want to have the whole, I didn't know it was a problem, or this is a surprise. We want people to hear, no, this is, you know, these are the experiences that Westford students or community members, or visitors in this case, are having.
One of the things we talked about right after the forum too was, a few years ago, before everything got interrupted, right, with COVID, I had started doing very specific civil rights assemblies, starting with our eighth graders, is that, you know, you can imagine sometimes eighth graders start making a little bit different choices than others. And the focus really was on reminding everybody in the room what their rights were, right? Really talking about what their rights are as students, showing them the actual laws as they're getting older, and then reminding them what it means if they were to violate someone else's rights, right? The focus really was, though, kind of empowering the students to, so that they are really aware of what their rights are. And Mr. Antonelli and I started talking about that as well too, and maybe he and I doing something like that together on a larger scale, even with the academy students, especially as we think about, you know, our seniors getting ready to go to college. You know, it's just another idea to really, the plus of reminding everybody, the empowerment piece, right, how they should be treated as individuals, and yet at the same time, a very clear warning and reminder to people as to how they should be treating others as well. And I feel like that's something that we're, we're looking at as well.
I guess the last thing, yeah, why don't we go to, yeah?
I think that's a really, it's a really good idea. I think, I think that high school is reflect, we're being set up to sort of go into the real world, and I think learning about our rights and like, I think learning about our rights is really, really important, because it is, it is a really important thing to learn about the real world, just as like taking a personal finance class, just as learning about, like, learning English, like, just as these basic things. I think that's also an extremely basic thing that really we should be learning about to handle ourselves in the real world, because like you said, these are college students that are now, we have adults in our school at this point in the senior class, and they're going to go to college, and they should know their rights. So I think that's really important that you said that. And I think another thing from the public forum that I just wanted to reiterate is that a lot of students wanted to see action. So I'm excited to see how this restorative process sort of takes form in our school, because they didn't want it to just be like a place where we talk about it and nothing happens. So I'm excited to see how this sort of takes form, especially on a day-to-day level. So that's all I wanted to say about that.
That's great. Thanks. I guess the last piece that we should mention is that we have been in contact at all levels with Wayland.
Yep.
But we all, we were contacted by the Wayland Human Rights Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, so that's their townwide DEI committee. And they're holding a public forum, a town hall meeting on, I think it's March 29th.
March 29th.
Yeah. And they had reached out and said, oh, you know, some people from Westford want to come, you know, we'd love that. They're doing it in person, or that was the plan, do it in person. And I think there was a pretty enthusiastic response from Westford, saying, we would love, you know, we would love to be part of that. And they were going to limit it to 50 people, and I was starting to get concerned, and then they came back and said, actually, we're going to make it available also virtually, because, because it sounds like Westford is interested in being a part of that, and they're really thankful. In fact, I think we're going to have, I think our town, I think we're going to have some cosponsorship with that as well, from our town DEI committee.
We were talking about that.
And so that's another opportunity. It's a little farther down, so that, you know, we'll remind folks of that as it comes, but it's another opportunity for these conversations with Wayland, which I think is really important, and we were really, like, pleased that they reached out in that way. Comments and questions? And I guess, I wanted to come back to what you started with, which was the social media post comment, and just, I'm reminded that we, as a committee, two weeks ago, voted on a resolution that reaffirms our commitment to our ongoing anti-racism efforts and our commitment to ensuring that Westford is a place where community members, visitors to Westford feel safe, feel welcome, and feel like they belong. And, yeah, it's pretty disappointing a week after that to have this happen. And it kind of feels like, well, you know, was it not clear that that's... And it kind of feels like, well, you know, was it not clear that that's, that's who we, that's who we are? And I think, I think we all agree that that wish came from the committee, but it, it extends to our, our employees, that we, my expectation would be that our employees also affirm those, you know, those intentions and act those out in daily life. So, it's disappointing, it's disappointing that, just to hear about it in general. And I do appreciate, I think, I think one thing that we've also heard is, it's important that we know when these things happen. So, it's appreciated that, that you communicated so quickly on this happening, so that we are aware when it happens. But, yeah, we'll, we'll look for more on that, but, yeah, it's not, not what we wanted to hear a week later. And I was going to start calling on people. Lori?
I, I, I know this has been said, but I, I just want to reiterate it. I don't think we can reiterate it enough that I, I, I would like, you know, for this committee to be able to voice our support for our students who are still struggling in the wake of these incidents, for, for their families and for the broader community, for our staff who do espouse those values that we hold dear every day, and who are struggling to, to see these events happening in our schools. But I'm also really proud that we are acknowledging the problem and that we are going to face it head-on together as schools, as a community. I, I applaud the administration for being transparent regarding the most recent incident as well. I think it is important that, that we are transparent with the community, that, that these things do happen in Westford Public Schools, and the only way we change that is to acknowledge it and to, and to face it. I think we need to continue to, again and again, voice our support as a committee for the continued work of anti-racism, and that it is ongoing, and it is not incident-specific, but it is broad-based, and, and it is long-term, and that, that is a commitment that we take seriously. And, and thank you to the, the Chris Squared team of Chris and Chris, who I know have devoted just a huge number of hours to, to this work on behalf of the committee. So, thank you very much.
Regarding the latest social media incident, because I, I received an email, but I don't really know, like, what that means. But I do, like, probably have some, like, more like legal kind of question, is like, is that happening inside our school boundary or outside school boundary? And then, and then, and then what's the proper response, right? Because it's a social media post, not in the classroom, or not in our buildings. Is, is, is this like the purview of, like, the school or the employer? Or it's like that person's private life? And then, and then, and then it shouldn't be dealt by the employer? That, that's the legal question I want to, some clarification.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, and I, I can answer that. Similar to the way in which the, the laws had changed in terms of the way they talked about bullying and harassment, and talking about the ways in which schools are now responsible for, for, I think, addressing behaviors that come into the building, even if the, even if the activity takes place outside of the building, right? And so, in terms of, I think, when you, when you consider like a social media account or social networking of different types, when individuals choose to share that with colleagues and/or students or former students in, in ways in which it becomes more of a public connection in ways, that it can become a concern, right? Because then you, what, what ends up happening is that whether it's a staff member, whether it's a student, the, the, the trust that is inherent in, in public education becomes, becomes fractured, right? So, I think there's a big difference between looking into people's private social media or private business versus things that people...
Push out.
Push out and publicize, that then, that then become problematic for a community. I do think, and I, because I think that's a good question.
Yeah, because like, the, the social media probably is like that person actually publicly published something. The other example probably is like more, maybe more creepier, right? It's like, some people have some private conversation, and although it's offensive, unless someone else is actually recording and posting on the internet. And then, and if that actually appropriate for the school to, to start actually, a senior employer, start punishing, punishing people?
Right. And I think the other thing that, that we're, that we are seeing, that I think we need to really clearly address is, yes, there is, even within our community, there is, we know that there's bias, and we know that there's discrimination, we know that there have been racist comments, racist actions, some of which are truly hateful. A lot are truly ignorant, right? And, and so, while the impact is more important than the intent, I think that's one of the things that many people struggle with when they think that their intent was something else. And I'm not saying that as an excuse in any way, I'm saying that that in itself becomes part of the challenge in the education and in the communication, and making sure that everybody understands the impact. I remember, I will say, one of the most eye-opening things to hear students say over and over again in the forum, and, and it had been said in the past, too, and I honestly was, I didn't necessarily think that, I, I had never seen it before. I know that students can be hurtful, and students can be ignorant, and students can be, you know, mean towards each other, but the number of students who talked about teachers who had made comments, who had made microaggressions, whether they were intent, whether they intended to do it, whether they were trying to be funny, whether, whether they were intending to be harmful, I, I will say that was alarming to me. And, and I feel like that's something that, that we have to, we have to seriously address and embrace to understand that, wait a second, I don't know if people, part of me wants to believe that it stems from a, a serious ignorance, right? As opposed to anybody meaning harm, because, you know, I don't, educators don't go into this field to do harm. You know, they, they do this because they love kids, and so, people are making mistakes, but we have to address those mistakes. And we have to, we have to make sure that people understand that, because I do think that there's, and I know some people don't like the word, but it is truly ignorant, will mean the basis of the definition, too.
Yeah, because based on your email, like, I can just imagine, because you, you making something about fortune cookie, making something, I think, maybe just because like he made fun of Chinese people, I think. I don't know what really like happened, right? But on the other hand, like, I don't know how offensive it is, so I don't know if, like, the punishment is, it's actually like too harsh or whatever. So, I, that's why, like, I, I want to actually make sure that we're on a good solid legal ground.
Yep. Good question. Yep.
Did you have something? Yeah.
I just wanted to come back in on, um, talking about DEI overview or coordinating. Um, you know, I, I know I kind of mentioned it, I think, in our last meeting. I know one of our commentators brought it up again earlier this evening. One of the things that I think, I feel, you know, we've seen in the last couple of weeks in particular, is that we, we have a lot of different committees in this town in general, and one of which is, we, we do have, you know, a town DEI, a school DEI, you know, then there's subcommittees within those town, you know, we have the Commission on Disability. We've, we've so many different committees that I think one of the things that probably happens is, you know, there's maybe not one overarching coordinator for them who can really maybe impact and create change, you know? It, it's great that we're having these conversations, but what's coming out of them is, is the other thing, because, you know, the message has to get out to the wider community. And, 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 you know, I want to kind of come back to then, you know, in this area of DEI director, and I know, you know, just speaking on the budget with the kind of the focus being sustainability, you know, the question of looking at hiring that type of person as, be it on a school level or a town level, but I wonder, is there a, a way that we can at least explore those options right now? And look at if we hire a consultant, which is a more sustainable way in terms of long-term budgeting, to work with our new position, the equity curriculum and instruction position? And also, can we look at doing a, a DEI director, maybe not just schools, maybe that this is a townwide? And I, I, I would like to think that we can start this process now, while we have access to ARPA funding, that can kind of help us maybe kick stuff, stuff off. But also, that gets us in a position that we have somebody and something lined up, ready for the new school year, or that potentially starts happening over the summer. You know, I'm, I'm very, what's the word? You know, my gut is telling me that regardless, be it a consultant or, or a director, that we need external expertise in this area. And, and that's why I, I don't feel comfortable that it just be, you know, if we potentially hire internally for this role, you know, that we're not missing that, that gap. So, you know, Pat did great even in terms of looking at projecting out when we did with the full-day kindergarten. Is there something similar we can do in exploring those options? And how can we go about doing it?
Chris, can I respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I, I, I think that that's a great idea in terms of the shared piece, right? And so, when that was mentioned, the notion of our director facilities is shared, right? Our technology director is shared. And there is a lot of work, I think, that, that also needs to be done on the town level. And so, the idea of considering a future shared position that would help oversee the, the various different departments in town, I think, is, is intriguing. The thing that I'm very optimistic about with our new plan is embedding the equity work within the schools in the curriculum office. That is the heart of what a school, what schools are. And that's, I think, the most challenging piece for us to make sure that all of our curriculum is reflective of, of the students that, that, that we have and are, are helping to provide, I think, the exposure for all of our students that they need. And so, the idea of that work internally, and I don't mean an internal person, because we've had that, you know, that, that conversation we had last time, I just mean, having, having the equity work embedded with the curriculum work makes a lot of sense to me, knowing the organization. The idea of exploring a dis, a town-wide DEI director who is truly supporting the schools and the police department, and the fire department, and the public works, and the library, and I'm like, okay, well, that's, that's a lot different, right? That, that kind of makes, that makes a lot of sense. And then, the last piece, could I, I had said this last time when we had talked about it. I think we, we are still going to also explore what we can do with one-time funds in terms of continuing and refining the consulting work that we have, that we, that we're doing right now, right? So, like, our, our professional development that we focused on this year was about cultural proficiency, and that was just to build capacity with our leadership team. But I feel like we now are seeing very clear, very clear information that we need to continue with, with specific work, right? And making, making sure that, whereas initially, our whole focus was, let's build the capacity within all the leadership teams, so that then they can support the work that's going on the building. So, I think they're going to need additional help with that, as we really expand it to the, to the schools as well. So, engaging with very specific targeted consultation in different ways, I think, is also another thing that we should be looking at. That is, is an appropriate use of one-time funds.
I, I, yeah, I, I'm glad you're raising it. I think, I, I'm optimistic about embedding that work with the curriculum, but, yeah, there's so much more that would fall outside of that, right? There's HR practices, there's our policies, there's townwide policies. And I do think I would be very much interested to have that conversation with the town about a townwide DEI. But, you know, whether that's an established position long-term, right away, using one-time funds, looking at ARPA, and saying, are there things we can do over the next two years, right? There are audits of, of, of personnel and hiring practices, audits of policies, to generate recommendations for how do we set ourselves up long-term? I'd, I'd certainly be in support of that.
So, is that, does that then come back to Dr. Chu, or is that something we need to, what's the action item in order to do that?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Well, I certainly think that the idea of like an audit, auditing services or consulting services is sort of on our brainstorming list for tomorrow's ARPA discussion. So, that would be that piece. And then, I, I'm not going to speak to the next step.
Well, we had already been, we had already been talking about the process of an equity audit as well, too, and so, what does that look like internally? And I, I feel like, to your question, Catherine, I, I think that a conversation between the school committee and the DEI, the town DEI committee and the select board, and, you know, to talk about, okay, well, is, is, is there, is, is there a future conversation to be had in terms of looking at the needs for the entire community, and can it be supported in some way? I feel like that's kind of a, and of course, I can, I'll, I can have those conversations with the town manager as well, too. But I feel like that's a, that's a, that would be the appropriate vehicle.
And not to put you on the spot, Anita, are there any, is there, are there known conversations that, that are pertinent to this, that, you know, you've been in with select board that I'm forgetting? Or is it, or do you feel like it's more, let's, let's keep this conversation going, and we'll have more later? Yeah, please do, please do. Because I've sort of lost track, yeah.
So, my name's Anita Tona-Karnwen, Nine Plain Road. I'm on the select board, but I'm not speaking officially.
Sure.
And so, we, I mean, I think a lot of the work that we were doing was really going to be coming through recommendations of the DEI committee, because it's the town DEI committee, but it's really town and schools. So, I think if we can all get together and round up and empower that committee to come up with those recommendations, or if we want to talk to them about that idea of a townwide coordinator, that's sort of the channel we probably want to go through. Derek is also in the DEI committee.
Yeah, we have DEI representation as well.
Yeah. But I don't think people would be, I would be surprised if people are opposed to the idea of elevating this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Derek, like, anything, anything to add while you're here?
There's a hotline.
Derek Lo, Sett, Fort Worth Road, part of the DI committee, but not speaking, I should say. I would say, on the recommendation side, the, right now, the committee, we drafted kind of a list of short-term recommendations, more specifically in response to the incident from January 28th. And right now, the committee's kind of looking at that, and will probably, probably take a vote on it at the, at the next DEI meeting. Okay? All right? Thanks.
And just since we're talking about all the great work that's happening in those committees, there's also that reminder that that family survey happened in the fall, and those results are also being worked, and will sort of bubble up into discussion and findings as well soon.
Thank you. Other thoughts or questions? You nodding because you have a thought or a question?
No.
You're just generally saying there probably are other ones in the world?
I was just channeling positive energy. I do that.
I accept. Okay. Well, that was a good discussion. Thank you. We're going to go on to our eighth, oh, it's 8:31, and we're going to our 8:30, sorry, we're behind. Our 8:30 item, which is COVID update. I'll start just by recapping, at the last meeting, the committee did take a vote to recommend to the superintendent that we, in light of vacation week, that we extend masking in schools for the duration of this week up through Friday. And so, that's just a reminder of that. I know, I know that, that, you know, had mixed, mixed reactions from, from the community, I understand, and, and, but just, I, I would reiterate that we didn't, we didn't go against DESI recommendations here. DESI dropped their statewide mask mandate, but they also empowered districts to do... DUCI dropped their statewide mask mandate, but they also empowered districts to do what was right for their district. So that we did not, you know, go against DUCI recommendations and or Board of Health. Board of Health is supportive of us making that decision for for the district, even though Board of Health did, in fact, drop the townwide mask mandate at their last meeting on the seventeenth. I think that's all I was going to say about that. I guess I would also say for people like me who like to follow, like, one of the latest metrics and guidelines from the CDC, they did update, I think it was on Friday, update their recommendations and their guidelines. I thought that was really interesting. And I thought it made a lot of sense in light of vaccinations and Omicron and 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 the number of people who've had Omicron, they are looking a lot more at hospitalizations, hospital capacity. They're also looking at case numbers, but it's weighted a little bit differently. So I recommend people go to the CDC and they kind of have a map with county by county. And so as of Friday, Middlesex County is in fact in the low, I don't know if they call it low risk, but low classification, which was really nice to see that updated guidance. That's all I got.
Chris, could I just come in just because it's completely connected to what you just said? I also just want to clarify, based on the number of emails and messages that we've received is, you know, I know I was one of the four who voted. I I don't think it came across clearly enough that for me, the vote wasn't necessarily just about traveling. I'm very aware we have under fives in our community not vaccinated, and we have high-risk families. And so for me, giving us that five extra days is giving the administration and the school, because we were off for a week. So I I'm not assuming that people were traveling left, right, and center for it, but that it gave us some extra time because we have to keep those families front and center now as a community. It's really important that we're mindful of of, you know, how our actions are going to impact those. And I can't imagine, you know, I'm lucky enough that I don't have anybody in my family who is high-risk or not vaccinated. But I I can't imagine the stress some of those families right now are feeling, knowing that there has been a lot of change in recent weeks and months in terms of some of our different strategies. We've changed how we're testing, we're about to reduce masks and stuff. So I think, you know, that for me was really the focus of my vote last, last, the last meeting, to just give us a bit more time, you know, to support those families that need it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chris.
So piggybacking on both of those things, right? So I was going to to share the information that the CDC had come out with. And I know, Catherine, you had had questions about the under five and and high-risk and and are medically compromised students as well, too. So I'll talk about that in a minute. I do think a point of confusion, right? And I think understandably so for people is that as the CDC changed their recommendations, they also changed the expectation that masks be worn on buses, on on school buses. And we did not articulate that in what we talked about because the communication that I have shared to families was clearly that the vote was taken to extend the masks and then those things were in place. So I reminded people that those things were in place. And so the vote was in in Westwood Public Schools. There was not necessarily a specific vote to talk in terms of of whether they're wearing them on the buses or not. And I feel like that is potentially a point of confusion for some people that I think we can talk about in a minute. Think about that for a minute as I as I say that. The, the our families, we have been communicating the building principles specifically. And more importantly, I think, any students who who have individual health plans have been talking with their teams and talking with school nurses as well, too, to communicate any specific changes to plans or new impli- implementing new plans or just, like I said, changes to plans or whether they're following similar plans that already existed based on, based on, again, on those very specific individual needs. One of the things that I think will be important is we do have, while we're still have access to the symptomatic testing and we are still continuing with the at-home rapid antigen tests that that we've started, that's supposed to, the state had told us that that would continue throughout the rest of the year, that we they would provide us with those resources. I think it's important for families who do have students who are under five and or are medically compromised in any way, that they, if they had not given consent in that platform to allow the nurses to conduct symptomatic testing, I think it's very important that they do that. Because that in itself is a mitigation strategy that we have at the building level now that they would have to elect to take, to 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 participate in. So I feel like that that's, that's just an important thing for people to remember because that is there and that can be, that can be very helpful and timely in helping to communicate important information to students who might not have, they, if they're, if they didn't have access and or if they're if they're on a specific health plan that articulates that, yeah.
Chris, related to those symptomatic testing, like, do we know what percentage of families have opted in?
I can give you the update. I didn't look it up, but I have access to it here. I'll look that up in just a second and share that with you. The, the other, the other pieces that I think is really important, and Magna, I keep going back to some things that you said at the beginning of the night, too. You mentioned this, that I think is also really important, that there are concerns that I know some families have have mentioned just even about our environments in the schools. And we need to be mindful of the fact that while masks will become optional on Monday, for some people, it's really not optional, right? So when we, when we think about how how nice it is to maybe be able to see everybody's faces, we need to really think in terms of how we communicate that. And that's going to be one of the things I'm going to kind of remind our faculty and and remind people just being, it's, you hear people say it in passing quickly, but I think it's just, it's something that we really need to create environment where everybody is able to make the choices that that they that they, that they have to make, that they need to make, right, for themselves. And so I feel like that's an important piece. And Magna, you had kind of touched on that, you know, when you were talking about kind of the celebrating a change and remembering that it's not necessarily a change for some people and might not be celebratory in the same way. So I think we just need to be mindful of that.
And real quick, just, I mean, just for people specifically, I think the example that I've seen multiple times would be a teacher saying to a classroom, how nice it is to see your faces and how that, while that seems like a natural human response to a relief over two years of masking, would potentially create an inequitable, not inclusive environment for students who are masked, right? And so like, I think, and I think it's perfectly natural that you would want to say that, but how, you know, with with focus on on inclusion, how that would feel to people who either are wearing a mask that day or maybe still aren't sure how they feel about this whole, you know, being unmasked, maybe they're going to.
Well, and I I also just think it's important, I I feel like as a society, we've now moved towards looking at people wearing masks at a variety, at various times, right? Like, this is, we might not necessarily have a mandate, but I know now I would be a lot more comfortable than I ever would have. I wouldn't even considered it before the pandemic, but if I wasn't feeling well now to wear something if I come, if I'm coming into work just to, you know, to be helping out everybody who's around me, I know Nino would certainly appreciate it. And and so, you know, I mean, but that idea, that that's something that I think we just need to be, we need to be cognizant of. And so even as we say that, I know we have so many teachers in the room and they're all like, yeah, because they know. There are things like, we know that, our intent, it goes back to that intent piece, right? Like, nobody would ever say anything wanting to, thinking that they're going to be making somebody uncomfortable. So it just, we just have to think about it. And it doesn't mean that we still can't be, I think, be be very positive in creating these these fantastic environments that we have. We just have to be mindful of that. It's going to be a transition, it's going to be a change, it's going to be problematic for for some people. And we need to be, we need to be cognizant, aware of that. The MIAA also adjusted their their expectations to now be back to local control, right? So that could be some confusion, right, for some people? Because before, they had their own expectations for mask-wearing for 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 indoor sports, and now they've also changed so that it's whoever the host, whoever the host community is, whatever their expectations are, then any visiting teams need to, need to follow those, those expectations as well.
But is that something we would need to, you know, decide upon separate from what we've already said?
No, no.
In your mind, whatever, whatever applies.
There are competitions taking place this week at the academy, and I know the athletic directors are in communication with each other. So they're aware of what that means while this, while this, while this is still in place.
I just wonder, are there, do you know, are there districts who are doing something different for, maybe for sports than they are for general, like, for the educational environment?
I don't know. That's a good question. I don't know. No, I don't know. And I said I was going to look up that information, so let me, let me.
You had your hand up a little while ago. While you're doing that, can Gloria chime in on?
I I think it probably reiterates comments that were already made, but, you know, I'm always willing to talk. I I want to, I want to express, acknowledge really the spectrum of communication that we've received on this issue. This was a divided vote on this committee. This was a divided, the the Board of Health struggled with with their vote. We need to acknowledge the the frustration that this additional five-day buffer period is causing for some of our our students and families. I appreciate their patience during these five days. For those who wish to remove their masks, Monday is coming. And and for those students and families and staff members who who don't feel that celebratory feeling and and may have health concerns, we want, we want to be supportive of them as well. So encouraging everyone to have some empathy and kindness for one another as we kind of transition into the next phase of of this school year would be very much appreciated.
Just coming into Gloria's point then about, you know, what was being communicated. You know, I I heard in a few comments about families feeling that they need, you know, that we should at least be acknowledging what our students have done for the last two years. And, you know, Magna, you know, it it's not easy even being here for a few hours with our masks on. I know we've gotten used to it somewhat, but do we ever really get used to it? And I I think it's especially for our younger kiddos, what they have had to endure for the last two years has been, you know, it's not been fun, it's been uncomfortable. You know, it's possibly, you know, changing their mindset about stuff in the future. But I think it's worth noting that we've never, and I have never taken, because I know some points have been made about how this impacts, you know, kids. And I am, I I don't hold anything back in saying, two of my kids, this does, has impacted them in terms of their ability with their speech and language and understanding. So, you know, I I do understand this situation from from that parent's point of view. And it's really important we acknowledge what they have endured. You know, I can't imagine some of our teachers here tonight trying to understand some of the five-year-olds when they've got masks on and tiny voices down at the back of the class are teaching phonics. So, you know, it's, I think it's really important that we acknowledge what we have done these last two years and what we've had to go through.
And acknowledge our staff also wearing the mask and having to communicate to to our learners and it's.
Although it has been nice, you don't always have to do a full face of makeup.
That's true. It's just, it's been two years, I I, you you talk about, like, it's just amazing.
It's crazy.
It's really, it's really remarkable.
Crazy.
Magna, did you have something?
Yeah, I I, I mean, I just wanted to say, like, as a student, it's it's a really, really difficult decision. Because we're the ones that are actually going to school. And at the end of the day, like, we're the ones that are going to be sort of dealing with this decision. And like personally, like, I'm very sort of split, right? Because I've been wearing this mask for two years. And this is not to undermine the struggle or the that, or the fear that many kids who are at risk face, but it's hard. And I'm sure they know it, too. It's hard to sit there for six hours in a day and continue. And that's not if you, that's not including if you have clubs to go to, councils to go to, like, it's hard. And to walk the halls of your school every day with your mask up and over, over your nose, as hard as it sounds, like, when you talk, it tends to fall. I think we all know that. So I think we can acknowledge the difficulty. And then at the same time, it's hard for me because there are peers sitting in my classroom that like are double masking at this point because they really, it's going to be bad if they get the, if they get COVID. So it's a really difficult decision for children. I'm still split, it's still hard for me to sort of, I've lost a family member from COVID, unfortunately. So, you know, I've seen both sort of ends of the spectrum, but at the same time, I am, it's been two years. Like, I'm really tired of wearing these, but there is also a social responsibility. So, you know, the students, the students have a tough decision, I have a tough decision. So I just wanted to remind people of that.
Did I ask you this last time? Do you, do you have a prognostication over like what percentage of students you think will be wearing masks at WA? Do you have, do you have a sense just from talking to your peers?
Yeah, I think generally the masks are going to come off. I couldn't give you a number, but I think even students who are aware of the difficulties that a lot of students are, that might face if they get COVID, I think the majority is going to be taking their masks off at school. I think people are sort of ready. And I think there are other ways to also be safe. You know, like, making sure you have clean hands and all of that sort of, there's other precautions you can take. But I believe, I can, I don't think I've heard a single, I don't think I've heard someone say that they're not going to take off their mask yet. At least a lot of people have expressed, like, they are excited for the masks to come off.
It's a good reminder, thank you, of the the other hygiene things that we emphasized a lot, I think, at the early part of the pandemic, like, hand hygiene. It's a good reminder that we, like, we need to double down on that now because we, a lot of us won't have the extra protection.
And also, it doesn't have to be one or the other. I was thinking about this, right? Like, let's say you have a student at risk who sits near you and you're going to, you could put your mask on for that class.
Exactly.
And then you could clean your hands and continue moving on with your day. So it doesn't, like, for students that are struggling with a transition, it doesn't have to be binary. And it doesn't have to be like, either you have it on or you don't have it on. If you're far enough from a student that has it, maybe you could take the mask off for that, for that class.
Appreciate so much of your insights, like, every, every topic, I feel like.
Thank you.
Really well done.
But it mirrors what people kind of say potentially we're looking at as a wider community, that masks will probably come off and on in certain situations, possibly for the next year, next few years. You know, it it makes sense that the the high school students and middle school are able to understand and make those decisions as well because it's probably just a part of life for the next, the next while, so.
Can we circle back to buses?
I think he was going to.
Let me just give the numbers quickly. The numbers are similar to what they were before. We have one thousand six hundred and fifty-one students and four hundred and seventy-eight staff members who have opted into the at-home testing. So there could be a variety of reasons as to why someone isn't opted in, but those, that's those numbers.
Could we consider sending a reminder, like a one, an email specifically on this to try and encourage
Sure.
a bit more uptake on this, you know?
Because it, I mean, it does strike me, Chris, right, like, that, I don't know, it seems low.
Yeah.
I I mean, it's, that's wide, a little more than a third of our student popu- population. I mean, as someone who is partaking in the program, I will say that it is not overly cumbersome. You get your two tests every two weeks. And my five-year-old begrudgingly does it and it's, but he does it and it's, it's become a thing and it's all good.
Are they the numbers for the symptomatic or the at-home testing?
It's the same thing.
Yeah.
Oh, so it's the same.
Right, so that means that we have three thousand students who have opted not to get at-home tests.
Yep.
Even symptomatic, though, I mean, if, even if they're not testing at home, I think it would make sense that you at least opt in so you can be tested in school. Because I'm in, I'm assuming a nurse, if she has a student in front of her who thinks potentially has COVID, and if she's not able to test them, there's no choice but to send that kid home. So it actually makes, if you want to keep your kid in school who is potentially symptomatic, to opt in for that systematic test, symptomatic testing.
Right.
And if you do, it doesn't mean, I mean, if. And if you do, it doesn't mean, I mean, if you don't want to take the take-home one home and do it, you don't have to, but at least you can do the in-school symptomatic and keep your kid in the classroom.
I mean, this is really, like, it's just, it's a very cool thing that the state's doing and it, it's, it's saving people money. So for those who don't know about the program, again, here's a quick plug, do it. It's great.
Yep.
Because also bearing in mind with the masks coming off, we could have some nice colds and flus during the rounds that we haven't had been exposed to. So, you know, I think it would be naive of us not to prepare potentially for a bit of some bugs during the rounds.
Sure.
And, and some family and staff members might change their mind on opting in because we're shifting to a mask optional policy next Monday.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, I mean, in sending that invitation again and letting people know that, that, that's still an option, I think would be great.
I mean, I think it's been going out in, I know in the WA email, I think it's been going out every, every week, I would say.
Yeah, the, the principals have been including it. I'll, I'll include it in my monthly.
I just wondered, should it go out as a one-off, a standalone district-wide reminder, rather than being embodied in newsletters or?
Well, there could be a communication about the change to mask, right? And that could be part of it, of that message.
And about the buses, because you wanted to check on the buses.
Yeah, we, we need to address that.
You're probably not going to like this, but my recommendation would be not to change anything that you've done. And it's been lifted on buses and that's not included. And I know, I know some people think that that's inconsistent, but again, my recommendation originally was to follow the DUCI guidance in lifting it on, on Monday. And I feel like you can and we can, you can certainly amend what, what, what you talked about to make sure that it's included, but I, unless I'm looking at it differently, and I could be looking at it incorrectly, and if, if any of you think otherwise, I just don't think that the language in the conversation included bus transportation because bus transportation was being covered by the federal.
Right, it, it didn't, it didn't. I mean, I would think that's, I think that would be my interpretation as well is that it, it did not explicitly include that, primarily because we thought we were covered until March 18th.
Yeah, eighteenth or fourteenth, yeah.
Sean, did you, you had your hand up?
No, I'll, I'll reserve the comment.
Okay.
Can I check? That was a CDC, but did the federal law change? Or was that just a CDC recommendation that hasn't been adopted on the federal level?
It was based on the CDC information, if my, if I'm remembering correctly.
That's what I was.
It was a both, I think, right? It was, it was a mandate based on CDC. I don't know if that's how, if that's exactly how it worked. It was, it was through the Department of Transportation, actually, right?
It was a bit confusing, I'll have to say, as I was reading stuff, because then they were saying you still had to wear it flying, not uncertain, but.
So effective February 25th, 2025, 2022, CDC does not require a mask on buses or vans on the public school or private school system, including early care, early care and childcare program. So mask off starting in February 25th.
Yeah, but that was a CDC.
Yeah.
Recommendation, I'm just wondering, because, you know, it was a federal mandate and I just wondered.
So now this is gone, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, just checking. I get confused.
I, I would say that when we made the vote, we did not specifically include bus transportation because at that time. It was covered. If that has changed since our vote, I think that that would be an administrative decision about how, how to, how to implement that. And I would, I defer to the superintendent on that.
The, the information from the commissioner is that, it's just that the federal, the federal Centers for Disease Control and Prevention announced that it is no longer requiring the masks be worn on school buses or vans for K-12 students and children in childcare programs. As, as always, any individuals who wish to continue mask, to mask should be supported in that choice. And then it has a link to the updated information from the CDC guidance. So it's what Ming Chen had just shared as well too.
We're, we're talking about a couple of days, a couple of days here in interpreting our vote in light of the changed guidance. I, I absolutely support whatever administration decides to, to do in terms of handling this next couple of days. Whatever makes sense for, for kids and, and for the, for our schools, I trust they'll implement it.
What happened today? I mean, do you know, what did people do today on buses?
That's an excellent question.
I'm guessing it was a patchwork. I'm guessing there's a little bit of this, a little bit of that, right? Because, just because there's confusion, understandably, right?
Confusion and ambiguity.
I'll check, we'll check, we'll check with our transportation folks and ask if there, if there were concerns or questions.
I'm assuming with the bus windows open and the short, somewhat short bus rides and.
So I don't hear any motions from the committee to recommend anything different than what you feel like is the right, the right thing for this week?
To me, that was a whole piece of potential issues where, especially you're sending kids to school and you're sending them and they, they don't need this here, but then they do need it when they get there. And we thought it was going to be the reverse, right? Where they would actually still need it and then not necessarily need it. So I feel like it's certainly easier for, you know, for families as they're navigating this to make sense of it. And I, I don't think that, you know, our bus drivers are going to prohibit anybody from getting on the bus if they, and they have masks that are available as well too.
Can you highlight, it is a reversal of what we thought.
That's right.
And so I, I just, I encourage just kind of general grace, everybody, like on all, like when somebody's supposed to have it and they have a mask and they don't, or they, I think this week, it, things change very quickly with the federal recommendations. And I think we, we get through the next four days with, with what we have and, and we'll all be okay. Is that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I don't know if it's just creeping to nine and maybe I'm the only one, and everyone at home watching totally understands what just happened, but the masks are optional on buses starting from this, moving forward. And then in Mon, on Monday, in buildings, masks are optional.
Correct.
Actually, from Saturday, it was.
Saturday.
From Saturday, they're optional.
Because there are some weekends.
Sorry.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah, that's the recommendation.
Okay.
From superintendent, unless the committee wanted to, to propose something different than.
So Netflix means like, because on buses, kids are actually sitting much like closer to each other and so like mask optional on the buses and the school, oh, they have a poor bus gang. Should, should the committee actually reconsider the vote and then just leave it tomorrow? For the, for the, for school buildings? Because otherwise, like, I can't say like, it's, I, I cannot understand the point or the logic if like kids are sitting next to each other on the buses, which is like this far away from each other. Well, in a school, they're a little bit further away, but they have to put masks on.
I will say, information has changed since the vote was taken.
Yeah, I know. So there's new information, should, should the committee actually entertain a new, reconsider the vote?
I mean, that, that's up to kind of the will of the committee. I mean, I would say, I think it was Catherine who said, you know, it is short duration and they are keeping windows open. I mean, that's certainly a factor. But yeah, I, I, I hear you in that, it, you know, things have changed and, and it is a little bit like, like we said, a reversal of certainly where we thought we would be.
I don't think it would be fair to families to make, take a vote tonight that would change it tomorrow for.
Yeah, that's tricky.
For some families who have maybe are taking this week or still looking to speak to, you know, school nurses. Considering people were off last week, they may feel that they, this is their week that they can reach out to class teachers or school nurses to try and make plans or accommodations, you know? And it's one thing being beside, you know, somebody for a, a couple of minutes on a bus as opposed to potentially the whole day together in school.
I, I understand there's a little, I understand the struggle, Ming Chen. I mean, there's a little logical inconsistency here, but we weren't necessarily in control of what the federal government decided to do for bus transportation.
Great if we could.
This is a transitional week. I, I think we should leave everything exactly as it is. We will cause a lot more confusion and frustration if we try and change anything at this point. I would, I would be in favor of hold the course. This is a five-day buffer period, we're going to get there, well, not even Saturday. Saturday is coming, folks. Saturday is coming. For those who are counting, Saturday is coming. That, that would be, that would be my thought.
Yeah.
Thoughts? Okay.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to Unit E collective bargaining. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position. The committee will not return to public session.
Second.
Catherine with the second roll call vote. Catherine?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Aye. Sean?
Aye.
Aye.